March twenty-six, twenty-twenty. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Third time, it's third.
Amber, do you second it? You second it.
Discussion, please. Do I have the call for the question? In favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, white flag. Motion carries. Village administrators report.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I'll go ahead and try to make this, it's gonna be a little bit longer than normal just because there's a lot of information, but I'll try to move through it as quickly as possible as we have a lot going on. First of all, wastewater project update. The connection activity for those unconnected properties in the Main Street area has slowed down somewhat due to the COVID-nineteen concerns. A lot of the plumbers are limiting their activity to emergency work at this point, even though they are considered essential personnel, so we're just being patient with them as we work through this situation. The new wastewater bills were mailed out this week. Overall, looking at them, the recalculation resulted in really only some minor adjustments. There should not be any real major surprises as far as those go for the various customers. And lastly, staff will be meeting with tech guy and the contractor for the Main Street project regarding those sewer cleanouts that are located in the path of the planned Main Street sidewalk project. The idea, again, is to try to figure out how to add those cleanouts in the locations and not have them be trip hazards as they begin the process or complete the process of building the sidewalks. The Main Street Improvement Project, significant progress has been made regarding the lane of sidewalk and curving. The contractor is reworking the bridge railing to conform with design specs. Installation of the bases of the decorative streetlights and handful of service poles for the lighting system is also underway. You're gonna see a lot of work about that over the next couple of days. And lastly, keep in mind the target completion date is in summer, more than likely early summer. The one thing I would point out in that is the fact that with everything shut down pretty much as a result of the stay-at-home order, they're obviously able to get maybe a little bit more done as a result of that, which hopefully will pick up their time schedule for completion. Going to Siletto Sales Tax Collection, all I wanted to point out to you all, and it's no great surprise, and that is you just need to anticipate and brace yourself for what should be a pretty significant hit on our city sales tax revenues over the next couple of months. We'll talk more about that later in the meeting on the budget discussion. The coronavirus COVID-nineteen update. Let me give you the latest information we have as it relates to Bell County and as it relates to Siletto. As far as Bell County is concerned right now, fifty-one cases have been reported in Bell County as of this date. Also, a total of eleven cases have been reported at Fort Hood. That fifty-one number does not include the eleven Fort Hood cases. Ten of the cases have recovered, from what we understand, and then one COVID-nineteen death, of course, reported in Bell County. The question may come to mind when we say recovered, what does that mean? Right now, they're following the CDC guidelines when they classify a patient as having recovered, and that's typically a seven-day analysis of their condition and the lack of fever, and so that's what they're looking at. We were advised today in a conference call with the county that there was a high likelihood the county may be looking at some modified definitions of recovery in the weeks to come as they begin to deal with this case load. They're not skeptical of the CDC guidelines, but they just think there may be a better way to better define when someone is truly recovered from their standpoint. Three of the cases in Bell County right now, three of those fifty-one cases are actually hospitalized, and we understand there are two of the cases off Fort Hood that are hospitalized, according to the latest numbers. Heading into a period of case acceleration, that's the big news we need to point out tonight, and that is the fact that over the next couple of days, you just need to understand that the numbers locally are going to be increasing significantly. We're at fifty-one right now, there's no question we could be looking at a couple of hundred if not more by the time this particular situation runs its course. So just be prepared when you start to see these numbers. It's nothing to panic over, it's what's expected if we have community spread underway, but it's something that is gonna be rather highly publicized, I'm sure, as those numbers begin to climb. There's probably no doubt we'll also see some more deaths in this county, unfortunately. In fact, along those lines, we were advised today from a regional planning standpoint that our health officials in the five-county region are in the process of doing some surge planning, as we're expecting a surge in cases over the next four to six weeks. They're mainly looking for a peak period, late April, early May, but they're doing surge planning as far as trying to find auxiliary locations for hospital beds in the event there's a needed. They're also doing more planning at this stage of the game in the event we see a substantial number of deaths in Bell County. As far as the hospital capacity and the ventilator capacity in Bell County right now, they're both considered in good shape, but I caution you not to get too overly optimistic when you hear of three cases that are hospitalized and when you hear of the fact that we've got plenty of beds and plenty of ventilators right now. Understand that we are in a situation where we're ramping up, and not just in Bell County, but we're ramping up statewide. And as that occurs, what we're seeing is we're seeing a situation to the point where they will possibly be moving people from county to county where they find available beds and available ventilators. But that said, in Bell County right now, tonight, we have eighty-seven standard adult beds that are available, as well as seventeen pediatric beds, thirty-nine adult ICU beds are available, along with eight pediatric ICU beds. As far as the vents are concerned, we have thirty-two adult ventilators that are available and thirty-six pediatric ventilators. But again, don't get too overly optimistic about those numbers, because those numbers could change very quickly depending on how fast a surge occurs and where it's occurring in our region, not just in Bell County. Judge Blackburn tomorrow will hold another news conference late in the afternoon, and I can confirm for you that he will be extending the shelter-at-home order through the end of this month. So that shelter-at-home order will be in place through the end of the month. That's to be consistent with the governor's executive order, which was issued yesterday. In addition, he'll be further clarifying some of the essential businesses and personnel so as to be consistent with the way the governor did it yesterday in his executive order. The food chain is holding up, and the residents are doing a very good job of social distancing in Siletto, per se. Also, the same reports are coming across from the county itself. Matter of fact, in our call today, our situation call today, we found out that they've only had, I think, fifteen complaints that they've responded to as far as people busting the social distancing and then the grouping gathering number requirements. There've been no violations ordered. People have complied when they told them to break up the gathering and go home, and they've done so. As far as our local businesses are concerned, the FBA recovery process, the FBA federal assistance process is kicking into full swing. There were some conference calls held yesterday for local businesses to participate. The source of funding, the source of assistance at this stage of the game is coming from federal government through the Small Business Administration. There are a number of programs that are up and available for local businesses. One of those programs actually has the ability to get an advance on a loan, and that advance could potentially actually be waived as far as having to repay that as part of the loan if that money is spent towards payroll protection. There's a special payroll protection program that's in place as far as assistance goes. I will tell you, the loan rates right now are very good through FBA. They're running somewhere in the neighborhood of, what, about three-point-six-five percent? So I think you're gonna find that the relief is gonna come pretty quick in that way. Along those lines, the thing I would caution folks about as they enter into this process is they need to be patient. This is not a local disaster, this is a nationwide disaster. So as more and more businesses link into this Small Business Administration assistance, I would feel comfortable in saying that the review process for that assistance may begin to slow down a little bit. They're saying right now, on the ten-thousand-dollar advances you can get on your loan through the economic injury portion of the loan program, they're saying you can get that money as soon as ten days. Will that delivery time be the same, you know, two, four, three weeks out, six weeks out? I can't guarantee that at that point. I'll also say this, and it's very, very important, that people document everything as far as the damage to their business and that they maintain that documentation, because in the recovery process, in the loan process with the FBA, they're gonna be asking you for documentation. The process is not that difficult, it's a little cumbersome, but it's not that difficult, but you need to maintain documentation and understand there will be records retention requirements in that process. So that's all I've got, Mayor, from a standpoint of the COVID update. Lastly, as far as the 2020 Siletto general election preparedness for your direction, we're proceeding at this stage of the game towards the May election. The first round of ballots was received this week at City Hall, and so we're gonna be sending those out, those applications we have received at this point that qualify for mail-in ballots. The election notice will be going in next week's paper. We'll be meeting with the election staff in the next day or two to nail down any type of staffing issues that may exist, and we, again, continue to accept applications for mail-in ballots with the understanding that in-person early voting begins on April the twentieth, if I'm not mistaken, and we'll go from there. Just a quick note about elections, and we sent this out to all the board members late this afternoon. We got another advisory from the Secretary of State's office talking about the date and strongly encouraging communities to look at a date different than May from that standpoint. As you know, the city of Waco yesterday voted to move their elections to November, but they did so also with the request that a letter be submitted to the governor's office to have them consider possibly moving the election to November, excuse me, to July rather than November, and they are gonna be submitting their letter to the governor's office in the next day or so to see if the governor would be open to that. Ironically, we hear about that, and then we get this advisory this afternoon, very strongly encouraging movement to November. So we don't know whether the governor's gonna fall on the issue, but there clearly is concern from the Secretary of State's office. Mayor, that's all we've got at this stage of the game. We want to continue to stress that people need to social distance, it's imperative that they wash their hands, and it's imperative that they stay at home if at all possible. One additional thing I'd like to point out, and the question has come up about why is the golf course active? The golf course is active because the governor has indicated that golf is one of those activities that is promoted in his executive orders as far as people going out and recreating during this process. He's stressing, though, that if you're gonna go play golf, it's imperative, and if golf course continues to operate, it's imperative that they practice proper social distancing. But there's nothing wrong with what's going on at the golf course right now as far as people playing golf. That has allowed, the county judge clarified that matter last Friday, as we understand it. So Mayor, that's all I've got.
Questions, Sidon, please.
One second.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear now?
Yeah, we can hear you, go ahead.
Okay.
Don, back to Mr. Hayes and Mr. Street's problem on Chaparral.
Yes, sir.
Can we have our Public Works contractor go over there and do maintenance on that? Would that be a solution for handling that issue?
Absolutely, and that's something we've got on our schedule to do as a result. Comment, yes, sir.
Other questions, please. Just to make sure that those who want to speak can speak, would each one of you say, just say hello so we can make sure that you're on and we can hear you?
Amber, can you hear?
I can hear, can you hear me?
We can hear you now, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions? Number four, ordinance. Consider approval of an ordinance authorizing and ordering the issuance of Village of Siletto, Texas, permanent improvement refunding bonds, establishing perimeters with respect to the sale of the bonds and authorizing the pricing officer to approve the amount, interest rates, price and terms thereof, and enacting other provisions, incident and related thereto. Don?
Yes, sir, Mayor. As you know, at the last meeting, we gave you a kind of a preview of what will come tonight. With the market changes that occurred as a result of this national emergency, the interest rates have become rather attractive to lead in the direction of maybe refunding existing debt. In our situation, we have some nine million dollars in debt left over on the wastewater bond issue that would potentially be open to refunding, especially with the low interest rate. The purpose of refunding, obviously, is to try to affect the net savings for the taxpayers. We're basically, it's kinda like refinancing a home, is a better way to put it, you know, where you're taking advantage of a lower interest rate to bring down your monthly payments. In our situation, it brings down our annual payments. It doesn't change the term of the debt, which in our case now is about fifteen years left, but it allows us potentially to capitalize on a lower interest rate and potentially create a savings that is returned to the taxpayers. Translation, the debt service portion of their tax rate may not need to be as high because they're not having to fund the debt payments that's as high. What we talked about at the meeting last week or two weeks ago was the fact that literally things are changing on a daily basis, and it's difficult to go in and schedule a sale and to move forward with it for fear that maybe rates may change based on what they were yesterday versus today. So what you typically do in those type of situations is you adopt what's called a parameter ordinance, and the parameter ordinance basically sets up the standards in which that we would be open and willing to move forward with refunding our bonds. If it's not within the parameters, then you obviously don't move forward with the refunding. If it's not as lucrative as we thought it would be or as it should be, then we think about that, and we may not do that. But this basically opens the door and allows us to move forward from a staff standpoint, working with our financial advisor and our bond counsel to go into refunding this particular debt that we have left in this situation. We may or may not refund, it just depends on the conditions when we go after market and we see what the interest rates are. Jerry Kyle is our bond counsel, Chris Lane is our financial advisor, and both of them have joined us tonight. You have the ordinance that's in your packet, which basically spells out the parameters that we talked about at the last meeting. I will tell you, we've had some discussions with Jerry and Chris about their fees. As you know, there's a fee that is charged, a professional service fee that's charged by your financial advisor and your bond counsel, which is very typical, very standard, and I think there were some questions raised about that, and we've talked to them, and they've gone back, and they have agreed to bring their fees down. The thing to understand about this is, from a savings perspective, it's important to understand that the fees, the professional service fees we pay are gonna be, they're not gonna float with whatever the amount of savings you get is. It's kind of a fixed fee, for lack of a better phrase. There are also some attorney general fees that are required as part of this, and you've got some other fees, incidental fees that accompany this. But in large part, they're minute compared to what the total savings is that we're trying to accomplish. If you recall, two weeks ago, we talked about the fact that we were looking at potentially a savings of somewhere in the neighborhood of seven-hundred thousand dollars over the course of the loan, and when you took the fees out, at that time, the fees that were being quoted, it was gonna bring our savings down into the neighborhood of about sixty-thousand, excuse me, six-hundred thousand or six-hundred-and-fifty thousand, thereabouts. That said, it would equate to probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about a forty to forty-nine thousand dollar reduction in our debt service payment on an annual basis, which that would then, of course, go back to the taxpayers and the reduction of the debt service tax rate. So I think what I'd like to do now is get Jerry and Chris to come forward and talk about it. We've asked Chris to kinda see if the market has changed or if she's still sticking by that seven-hundred thousand dollar mark with about a two percent interest rate. And Jerry, you can maybe explain the ordinance a little bit and the process that we're following, and y'all can talk about your fees. Chris, can you hear me? Not able to hear you, Chris, Jerry, can you talk?
Okay, I'm using my phone, I'm using my phone instead, because I couldn't hear my voice. Okay, so the market is changing, as you said, on a daily basis. We've run the numbers at two percent. I feel like they should come in below that, given where we've just sold bonds last week. So I see this as a conservative number, and right now, with the lowering our fees, that's gonna push the, if we keep the rate at two percent, somewhere around seven-hundred thousand dollars in savings. And again, I'm hoping that the bids will come in lower than that. We need to give the banks at least ten business days, ten full business days to bid on this. But I've talked to the banks, I had a conference call again this morning with them, and they're all very anxious to bid on everything that's out in the market. And again, given the rate that they can borrow, their cost of funds at, and what they are offering you, they're making, it's advantageous to do a private placement with a bank versus trying to do an open market sale. That's where the savings is. So anyway, I'll let Jerry talk about the ordinance.
Jerry? Thanks, Chris. Don, can you hear me?
Yes, can.
Okay. If you'd like, Mayor, I can hit on some of the high points in the ordinance that's in your packets.
Please.
Okay. Basically, as Don mentioned, this is a parameters ordinance. So what this does is, in adopting this ordinance, City Council, Board of Alderman would authorize, there's two pricing officers identified, either Mayor yourself or Mr. Ferguson could serve as the pricing officer with authority to basically kind of finalize the terms of sale in accordance with the parameters that are specified in the ordinance. If you go to, so the first page of the ordinance, after the table of contents, we've got just the recitals, kinda giving the background, the context for the refunding. In the definitions, I would probably just draw your attention to page, uh, page four, sorry, page three of the ordinance where we name the pricing officers, which as I mentioned, are the mayor and the village administrator. And then, moving forward, really, go through some of the highlights. Section two oh one is the general authorization for the issuance, where we identify the purpose of the refunding is to refund the outstanding bonds, and we set the, there's a not-to-exceed principal amount for the issue of not to exceed ten million dollars per amount of bonds. Really, and I'm happy to go back and go through this in greater detail, I probably would jump forward to section eight oh one, which is where the delegation occurs. So section eight oh one, the sale of bonds, is where the authority is conferred on the pricing officer to set all the various terms and conditions of the sale, namely, principal amount of bonds, interest rates, maturity, and all those kinds of things, subject to Exhibit B. And Exhibit B is where we specify the exact parameters, and that's the very last page. And I'll show you, on Exhibit B is where we prescribe the minimum savings of three percent. So the refunding would have to, for the savings, of not less than three percent before the transaction could proceed. Otherwise, the pricing officer would, as I mentioned before, work with Chris to review the bids that are submitted by the banks to kind of determine the best bid, and then, assuming the minimum savings threshold is met, authorize the sale of the bonds on those terms. After the winning bid is identified, then we work with the winning bidder, we get a purchase letter from them where they commit to buy the bonds on the terms offered, we kind of finish the paperwork, we file the transcript with the Texas Attorney General's Office. As a sidebar, we're doing all this electronically these days because of the shelter-in-place orders and those kinds of things. But anyway, the AG has been very good about working with us in these electronic days. So we go through the AG approval process, get the bonds approved by the AG, and then about a month after, the award to the winning bidder, the loan would fund, the proceeds then would be used to refund, pay off the outstanding bonds, so those bonds would go away, and then the old debt is replaced with the refunding bonds, which provide the savings we've been talking about. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay, thanks very much. Questions, please, to either Chris or Jerry, please.
Yeah, Chris, this is Corey, can you hear me?
Mike, can you hear?
Yes, I can hear, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, go ahead.
The question I have, Don, is how do we know the fees that they're charging is a good fee? Have we gone to any other agencies or vendors that, and compared it, or has, how's that analysis been performed that we're getting a good deal on that, the fees that vendors are charging?
Mike, we're under agreement with both Jerry and with Chris. They have been the city's bond counsel and financial advisor for several years. They were involved in the original issuance before my arrival. I will tell you, from my experience, no, in response to your question, we have not gone out and stopped it because they're right now our contract advisors. I will tell you that we have looked at the fees that they're proposing, and they're very much in line with the type of fees that other communities are seeing from other financial advisors and bond councils, both from my past experience as well as current issues that I've talked to other people about.
And then, in section eight point oh five, it talks about the mayor, the mayor pro team, village administrator, and secretary individually or collectively are hereby authorized and directed to furnish and execute such documents and certifications. Does that mean that just one person out of that group can sign on behalf of the village, or how is that supposed to work?
Jerry, you wanna answer that?
Yes, absolutely, yes, sir. That's basically a very broad general authorization that, it doesn't directly relate to the delegation to execute the winning bid, the purchase letter with the winning bidder. It's intended to make sure that there's no log jams once the bid has been accepted and we're on the path towards closing, to the extent that there's any certifications that are required by the purchasers or by the attorney general. It basically just confers authority on really kind of any and every city official to facilitate the closing, that's been, closing of the transaction that's already been approved by the pricing officer.
Okay, does that mean that, that once the bond sale is completed, the deal, I mean, the deal is ready to be signed, does it come back to the board, or does the village administrator just sign it?
It's the latter. Either the mayor or the village administrator is authorized to commit the city to the terms that are offered by the bank. The theory behind that is, as we talked about at the last meeting, you know, with market volatility and changes, the idea is that when the mayor and the village administrator working with Chris deem the conditions appropriate, they would be authorized to go out and try to get the best terms that are available.
Okay, so this is basically the last look that the board is gonna have at it before we fire it, then it gets executed. And Exhibit B is the thing that we primarily, it's gonna be the driver for this, is that correct?
Yes, sir, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Other question. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Can you hear me, okay?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. So we had a lot of questions on the numbers, but I haven't seen the exact numbers yet or closer numbers of exactly how much this was gonna cost us. And I know you say there's attorney general fees, there's, you know, fees to our council, there's all these different fees, but how do we know what's going where and a really good approximation of what each one of those numbers is gonna be for an exact total, you know, because I think we owe it, you know, we've gotta be physically responsible right now, and so, you know, I'd like to see those numbers printed somewhere.
Right, Chris, can you go ahead and read those off if you can, please?
Okay. The fees for bond council are, we lowered them from sixty-five thousand down to forty-eight thousand, and I agree typically the financial advisor fee is higher than the bond council, but I agree to do what the bond council fee was. So our fee is also forty-eight thousand dollars. There's an attorney general fee, and once we get all the costs in and the actual bid, we'll know exactly what that fee is, but it's generally a tenth of a percent, so it'll be like nine thousand dollars, if it's nine million dollars, it'll be nine thousand dollars, and it's capped at ninety-five hundred. If the bidder, the purchaser, the little bidder on the bond, some of the banks charge a thirty-five hundred dollar fee for their bank council review, some of them do not. So there may be a cost for that. So if you add those fees up, and there's a municipal advisory council fee that we'd have to pay too, and that's maybe five hundred dollars. fee that we'd have to pay too, and that's maybe $500. So it's about $109,000 approximately. And the 3% number, the fees are all included in the net, is net of the savings on the deal. So if we, if we get a 2% interest rate, which I'm hoping to get something lower than that, your savings is somewhere around $700,000.
Chris, say that again, please. How much is the savings?
Somewhere around $700,000, that's what we're projecting, and that's 5.9%. And we're, the threshold is 3%. The typical savings on a refunding is 3%. And we, right now, if we, if we did a bid at 2% with the fees that we have in there, it's somewhere just around 6%. So double what the threshold is.
But Chris, that's $700,000, is that the, that's the net savings after fees, right?
Yes, that's after fees, and now, again, that's an approximation because we don't have bids yet. So we're running it in a conservative number that we think is conservative, to show you what that potential savings could be.
I have a follow-up to that. So can you explain, are you all paid, both of you, are you paid by the village already a certain dollar amount? Are you only paid when you do these transactions? Does that make sense?
We only, we only, yeah, we only get paid if the transaction closes. We do not charge the city, it's part of the transaction cost.
There's no retainer, Amber, they're not paid. Yeah, there's no retainer, they're not paid on a regular basis, they're only paid when we do, when we do activity, and it's only on close.
Okay, that makes sense, I just wanted to get that out there for everybody. Thank you, that's all I had.
Hey, Don, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, this is Cole, I got one question regarding the 10 days. Does this 10 day, 10 business day, does that mean that once they set on a rate, they have 10 days to close it, or is that just a normal time to take to process a transaction?
Chris, you want to answer that?
Yeah, that's, that's what the banks are saying, that they need to process the credit review, because they have to do their own credit review, and their own, so they're doing their own background check on everything. So if that releases that from...
Okay, yeah, I'm clear, I'm clear on that, thank you. I just have one more final question. During this 10 days, if they settle on a rate, and they lock this rate in, does that rate stay at that point for 10 days, or can it still fluctuate?
Well, what we would do is we'd give them a little over 10 days, and then the bid would be due at noon on whatever that day is that we set. And they lock it in, we'll know, we'll converse with the city administrator and the mayor, and agree that if that's the lowest rate that we've gotten, and if it's acceptable to you all, then we would call the bidders, the low bidder after that discussion with the staff and the mayor, and lock it, would be locked in that day. They don't want to hold it, that's why we have bids due at noon, and then we converse, and we let them know later that day, because they want to know that day that they're the low bidder, because they lock in their cost of funds.
Okay, thank you very much, clear, thank you.
Chris and Jerry, it's very important that not only the city administrator, the village administrator, and myself, but I want the whole team of aldermen and older lady to be a part of this final decision. Does that make sense to you?
That's fine, we can do that, we can just, we can just put it on the net. When's your next, if we're doing it on agenda, we're going to have to do it, I'm looking at a calendar. Don, if we're not...
Yeah, Mayor, I, the one thing, real quickly, just to kind of make sure you understand where we're coming from, the concern is the volatility in the market and the ability of these people to hold their bids when you go out. And, you know, to be able to get the group together, that's the whole concept of the parameters ordinance, is to basically say, we're authorizing you all to go out, seek bids, and refund these bonds if they meet the following parameters. If they don't, then we don't do it. So you're setting the parameters for the refunding, the board is setting that with this ordinance, so they're part of that vote, as opposed to having to package it up and bring it back to the board at a later date and potentially lose the savings that you might be able to get, if you move in a timely fashion.
Okay.
Now, Don, I'm perfectly good with exhibit B. If they come up with a bid that meets that parameters, I'm ready to fire and go on this.
This is Cole, I agree.
Chris, what is your, what is your feeling about going out, getting bids, in this time in the market of our country, our world? What is your feelings about that? Do you think it's, there are going to be people out there that want to do this?
There's, I've been talking, I just had a conference call with five bankers this morning, and they are looking, they wanted to know everything that I had in the market, because they're looking to bid on these bonds. This is the way, you have to think that if the Fed funds rate is below, you know, half a percent or whatever, the 10-year treasury today closed at like a 0.65%. So when a bank borrows money, they can go borrow that Fed funds rate less than 1%, and they loan that money out to you at a higher interest rate, at maybe 1.5%. Like last week, so, and they're making the spread between that 0.65 that they borrowed the money out, and what they're loaning us for. So the bank, that's why we do the private placement, because one, the bank costs the funds is lower, and as long as they're buying, they're, they're a very competitive market. So you're not paying sales credit to a bond desk that has to have their salesman sell it, you're not printing a document, you're not paying for a bond rating, or bond insurance, or all these other costs that you have when you do an open market sale. So the, so the active market right now is the private placement market, where all the banks are looking for places to put their money.
Yeah, so banks right now are pretty hungry.
Yes.
Okay, good deal.
Last week, the deal that I priced last week, and again, it was shorter than your deal, and it was a water district in the Harris County area. It was about 10 years long, and the interest rate was 1.23%. So that's why I feel like 2% is a high interest rate. I think we should come in under that. But I can't guarantee that, I mean, it's whatever the bank, it's whatever day we put it in the market and what comes, the banks come back with, but...
Say, we don't know until we get out.
Yeah.
Get it out.
Frank, did you have a question?
I don't, I'm ready to move, but the mayor's ready.
One final thing, Chris and Jerry, you know, I've worked with you guys from the very beginning of this, and you have always been promptly on your calls, you've always been here when we've asked you to be in here, and you've been very straight with us. Personally, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor, we appreciate the opportunity.
I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mayor approves, moved to approve the ordinance authorizing ordering issuance of Village of Soleto, Texas permanent improvement, refunding bonds based on the parameters in exhibit B.
I second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, discussion now.
Question?
Question has been called. Let's do this by voice. Frank, can you hear your name?
Aye.
Mike?
Mike, yes.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Amber?
Aye.
Um, oh, yes, I know, the motion carries. Motion passes. Well, here we go, one more time.
Jerry, Chris, we thank you a lot. Thank you all very much.
Okay, well, I'll get with you tomorrow, we'll finish up the bond documents, Jerry's got him in his hands, I just need to update a couple of things, and we'll get it out.
And we get the ordinance signed, Jerry can get the paper covered to you.
Thanks, Don, that sounds great. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council.
Thank you all for being patient with us.
It's because they don't know how to use Apple computers. All right, here we go. We're going on now to number five. Discussion and possible action. A, discuss and consider possible action regarding a request for a variance from the Village of Soleto's fire sprinkler requirement for two, two retail businesses located at 21 North Main Street, Soleto, Bell County, Texas. Don?
Uh, Mayor, the applicant has asked if this ought to be pulled from the agenda, so no action is needed, Frank.
Very well. Number B, discuss and consider possible action relating to the fiscal impact of COVID-19 pandemic on the Village of Soleto.
Yes, sir, Mayor, let me go ahead and, I'll, just, the purpose of this agenda item is to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking at in the way of the fiscal impact, and let you know some of the things that we're doing from a budgetary standpoint, to deal with the impact stemming from this public health emergency that we're in the middle of. And I do stress in the middle of, and we don't know when the end is going to be occurring, but that makes it kind of tricky from a management standpoint, that it's just going to be a matter of staying on top of things. And I want to start off real basic at this stage of the game, and that is, let you know that from a budget standpoint, this is how our revenue stream breaks out for the city. In our city budget, about 38% of our total revenues are sales tax revenues. About 30% represent property tax revenues. About 17% of our revenue stream is franchise fees, and the remaining 15% is made up of license, service, and court fees. So clearly, sales tax, property tax, franchise fees, and then license, service, court fees, in that order, are revenue streams, the largest being sales tax, second largest being property tax. We have our property tax dollars in for this fiscal year, so we're fine from that standpoint, we don't anticipate any impact on that particular revenue stream as a result of what we're dealing with, with the shutdown of businesses. Sales tax is a whole different ballgame. When you have your revenue stream, 38% of your revenue stream is being impacted, it's going to have, it's going to have a hurt on the budget. We're right now looking, based on the information we're seeing, as far as the duration of this event, at least what the experts are predicting at this point, is we're looking at this event lasting basically March through July, which is a rather long period of time. During that period of time, there's a high likelihood that we're going to be in a shelter in place order for that duration. It's about three quarters of it, the majority of it, which means our businesses aren't going to be open. Clearly, we think when we get to June and July, we'll start to hopefully see some of those businesses open up again, as we turn the corner on this thing and get on the other side of the curve. But until then, our businesses are shut down, in large part. Our sales tax stream is going to be shut down significantly, as opposed to what we normally would see during this time of the year. From a fortunate standpoint, it's during a time of the year when we're really not generating a lot of sales tax or reaping the benefits of a lot of retail activity. It's certainly not a Christmas timeframe, or anything along those lines. We're on, we're coming out of what normally is a pretty busy time from a sales tax standpoint, heading into what normally slows down a little bit in those early summer, beginning of summer. From a sales tax standpoint, that said, we've done some projecting, looking at that period of March to July, with a couple of those months literally being almost zero months from a sales tax standpoint. Right now, our sales tax generation, we get limited sales tax from our grocery store, and we're getting limited sales tax, you know, from the convenience store, and we're getting sales tax from those restaurants that are, you know, busy, those businesses that are, you know, staying open and doing curbside service. Their activity's not brisk, I can tell you that. So clearly, when you start trying to predict the impact as far as sales tax goes, it's not a doom and gloom prediction, it's probably more of a realistic prediction, that we could be down to a couple of thousand dollars in sales tax revenues, as opposed to tens of thousands of dollars. In fact, our projection at this stage of the game, between that March and July time period, is we're looking at a sales tax decline of about 86% during that timeframe. What does that equate to in dollars? It equates to about $192,000 that we potentially are going to be short of, as far as sales tax revenue. Property tax revenue, as I said, there's no impact. We're going to have an impact on our franchise fees, and that's about 17% of our revenue stream, we're going to see an impact on that. You say, well, how do we see an impact on that? Well, there are going to be people that aren't going to pay their utility bills, that's a given, there are going to be people who aren't going to be able to pay their utility bills, because they don't have an income stream coming in. And so you have to try to account for that, and we think that that's probably anywhere from a 10 to 15% decline, which is somewhere in the neighborhood of about $7,000, $8,000 in production and franchise fees that we're projecting. It may be higher, but at this stage of the game, you know, we need to account for the fact that some people may not be able to pay those fees. License, service, and court fees, clearly, our police officers are out on the streets, they're writing a ticket if they have to write a ticket, but, you know, I think you're going to see a slowdown from a ticketing aspect, which means your municipal court activity's going to slow down. People coming in to pay their tickets is going to slow down, because they may not have the money to pay their tickets. They may not, you know, want to get out and about to come pay those tickets. So there's going to be some catch-up when we pull out of this thing, that we're going to have to do to try to catch up on some of those folks from the court standpoint, but there's clearly going to be a decline. And we think in that category of license, service, and court fees, which is about 15% of our revenue stream, we think that we're probably looking at about an 80% decline there, which is about $44,000. So all said, just our initial projections at this stage of the game, is we could be looking at a shortfall in revenue of about $240,000, $250,000, which is a pretty big chunk, if you operate on a million dollar budget. So the question is, can you absorb that hit? The answer to the question is yes, we can to a degree. Again, so much of it depends on how long this thing drags out, and how extensive it ends up running. You know, we've taken a number of actions with the understanding that we're facing a shortfall in revenue. A couple of immediate actions we've taken is, we have ceased all non-essential expenses, we basically have frozen those. We stopped any type of travel, we, we're looking at our office supply budgets, we're looking at all of those type of things, and literally trimming down anything that we don't need to spend money on at this stage of the game. We're deferring that until later when we pull out of this thing, and it may not even get spent in this fiscal year, depending on what it is from that perspective. We also have frozen all capital expenditures. We have two vehicle purchases, as you know, in this budget, that we have worked through our lease purchase agreement, where we're not scheduled to start making a payment until next fiscal year, which means we've got some money in that that we're going to be able to save from a capital standpoint, that we had earmarked for that. We have a capital vehicle replacement program that we've got money set up in, that we would just simply not allocate for, we'd save that at that point. The biggest chunk is going to be in streets, you've got over $101,000 in street improvements plans, you've got some drainage improvements planned from that perspective. But our feeling is, until we get a feel for where we're headed, we need to put the brakes on those unless it's a critical project that's needed. Translation, if we have a washout, if we have something along those lines, obviously we're going to need to spend that type of money. But going out and continuing the paving program at this stage of the game is kind of difficult to swallow when you're looking at these type of numbers and these type of cuts from that standpoint. We also have placed a freeze on any new hiring. We just hired our last new officer, and as far as replacing officers, as far as anything along those lines, we're not going to hire anybody else at this stage of the game until we get there. We've got several secondary measures that we're looking at, as we begin to analyze this impact. Among those, we're looking at reducing restructuring overtime expenses, you know, weighing, against adding full-time or part-time. We're looking at basically across the board percentage cuts, if we have to get there, to the point where you say, okay, we're going to knock expenses by 10% or 20% across the board, and then if we get to that point. We're reviewing current contracts, paying monthly and quarterly versus a one-time payment, if that's possible. We're looking at the idea of using undesignated funds in our fund balance. You have a pretty healthy fund balance, and this is one of these situations that, over my years in this business, you know, a lot of times, boards and city councils see fund balance as a rainy day fund, that they can go out and just start spending money from, and we always caution them, because we always say, when you have a disaster, when you have an emergency, you're going to need those type of monies to bridge the gap. This is not a, like a natural disaster, it's a whole different environment than we've ever been in before. It's prolonged economic downturn as a result of a public health emergency. And what we're dealing with in this situation, if this were a natural emergency, you'd be hitting that fund balance and owing enough bills in a heartbeat, because you don't have the money to get your bridges replaced and things like that. this situation, it's a prolonged impact. Your, your revenue stream is being choked down to the point where you need to look, look at potentially leaning on your reserves to help cover some of that gap. And obviously, you know, if, if, if it gets to it, we need to start looking at reduction of service, you know, our service levels. You know, the level of service we provide right now in our development services in, or in our public courts in, those type of things. You may look at, you may, it may get to the point where we have to start looking at those type of things, uh, you know, to try to reduce costs, at that standpoint, outsourcing, you know, like we did at the last meeting, the sample program we did on public courts to outsource some of those things. And lastly, uh, you know, you, you start looking at personnel costs and how to deal with those. And, 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 you know, we're not proposing anything to that effect at this stage of the game, uh, but it's something that we're not afraid to talk about because, at, at the end of the day, you need to keep the budget afloat, you need to keep the money, you know, being spent for the people, and you need to make sure we can overcome this. And, and if that means potentially staff reductions, then it means potentially staff reductions, or pay reductions, furloughs, those type of things. So, uh, we, we're planning on those type of things just as, as, as part of an emergency planning process that we typically look at in these type of situations. So, we've got hard decisions to make, potentially, in, in the coming weeks, the coming months. The interesting thing about this is, is the largest hit, obviously, is in the sales tax. And the weird thing about this, from a planning perspective, is we will not feel that impact for another two months and stagger that over that. So, the reality of it is, you're, you're not going to feel the impact of the shutdown in March, you know, until May, and you're not going to feel the impact of the shutdown in April, you know, until June. So that May, June, July timeframe is going to be kind of tight. Uh, it gives us some time to plan, it gives us some time to anticipate, uh, you know, and we'll have a better feel, obviously, for the, for the duration of this public health emergency as, as the days wear on over the next couple of weeks. Uh, budgetarily, just for your fact purposes, uh, our monthly operating cost for the village right now run about $79,000 a month. Uh, so that includes personnel, operating costs, all of those type of things, and that's for all city departments in the general fund. This does not include hot fund, we'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, from a capital standpoint, we've got totally about $202,000 in capital costs in the general fund budget, in this current general fund budget. And right now, our fund balance is sitting somewhere in the neighborhood of about a million dollars, a little bit under, but about a million dollars, uh, based on our last financial statement. So that's the general fund. Uh, and I think we're, we're trying to be conservative, we're trying to be realistic in that situation, but I, I wanted to make you all aware of that situation, uh, and we will, obviously, are going to keep you guys updated on this and probably overload you with information on this, uh, in the days to come as we work through this thing. Let's talk about our other budgets, and that is the wastewater budget. Right now, you're at a billing cycle, uh, with your wastewater budget that, uh, comes close to breaking even as far as your monthly operating costs on that plant. Obviously, if some of these extra customers come on board that are working their way through the connection process during the COVID-19 disaster, um, you know, those folks will come on and that will obviously turn the corner and, and develop a surplus force as far as the monthly wastewater revenue goes. Uh, the general fund subsidizes until such time as we get into the surplus mode with those wastewater rates. So, I would, I would anticipate, uh, the continued minimal subsidization from, from the general fund, uh, you know, versus the new system, uh, but, uh, that should hopefully turn the corner. But I will tell you, with the delay in getting some of those folks connected, we need to plan for the fact that that subsidization may last a month or two longer than we anticipated, or a couple of months longer than we anticipated. So that's something to, to, to be aware of on, on that end of this. Um, from a standpoint of the, the hotel tax budget, uh, this is the one that's, that's, uh, very, uh, difficult, uh, to, to, to walk through. Your hotels are not seeing any business at this stage of the game. Uh, if they have a room or two booked for a night, uh, we're lucky in that standpoint. Uh, most of them are reporting significant cancellation numbers, they're not seeing new reservations. Stagecoach has, has kicked it up to try to encourage the business chasing, and they, they reduced their rates considerably. Uh, I think they've had some, some limited bites on that, but it's not been extremely productive, uh, so we're anticipating some significant reductions, uh, in our room tax revenues. Uh, the room tax revenues, of course, go into a special revenue fund, that special revenue fund funds the tourism division, uh, and nothing more than the tourism division, and a, and a small percentage of ours funding on, on that end. But, uh, I think we can expect over the next, uh, you know, three months, uh, significant hits as far as the, the hotel revenue, uh, interim goes. So, uh, just, just be aware of that. That comes at a time where we're transitioning management in, in tourism. As you know, Chadley notified us, and he leaves as a matter of fact this weekend, uh, for a new world up in, in the East Coast, uh, the Northeast, uh, where he and his girlfriend will be heading, uh, to kind of start a new life, which is exciting for him, and, and we wish him the best of luck. Uh, the question is, do we go out and hire a tourism director at this stage of the game? We have several ongoing marketing programs that are in place right now that I think we leave in place, but I want to let you know that we're not going to go out and hire somebody at this stage of game for that position until we get further down the road. It doesn't make a lot of sense when you have no revenue coming in to go out and put somebody in place and start spending money. Uh, there's, there's one, one benefit to say, oh yeah, it does, it gives the new person a chance to get their feet wet, and at a slow time, they can get educated and get their grips around all the other marketing programs we've got in place that are functioning. Our feeling is, until we have a revenue stream, it's not smart, because I, we don't need to potentially look at, at, at further subsidization from the general fund, uh, of, of, of that particular area. And that's, we, we work hard to get away from that, and I think that we need to leave that room tax, uh, funded and, and, and when, when, you know, situations begin to turn around, and we need to start to, uh, re-invite and then reintroduce Solado to the community from a marketing standpoint after the scope surprises. Uh, I think at that stage of the game, we'd bring our person on board. Uh, we've got several applicants for the position, and we're communicating that with the applicants. Uh, we're not the only ones who are in that situation right now and are making the same type of decision. It, it just is, is, in my mind, it, it's sound from a financial standpoint to avoid bringing a body on at this time, and we can allow some of the existing visibility programs to continue, the billboards and those type of things to help keep Solado, at least in the forefront, those people who are out and about. Those are long, those are year-long contracts if we have any in those situations. So, that's kind of where we are. I, I wanted to let you know, um, uh, it, you know, we have some challenging times ahead from a budget standpoint. At the same time, as we're managing the current budget and dealing with some of these challenges we have right now, um, we're also in the process of preparing a budget for next year. Uh, and, and keep in mind, that budget cycle, uh, will begin October 1. Uh, we don't think we're going to be in the COVID world October 1, but quite frankly, who knows? Because that's the start of a new flu season, if you recall. So, I think from a budgeting standpoint, we're going to need to be realistic in, in our projections from a budget, from a budget, you know, preparation standpoint, and look at that. Uh, from a property tax standpoint, I think I alluded to this at our meeting two weeks ago, and I want to remind you that this was, that this coming budget year was the year that we were to move into, uh, the new tax cap, the 3.5% tax cap. Uh, the village being classified as a large city, uh, the way the state breaks the tax dynamics down, which means we would be, we would have been subject to that new 3.5% rollback rate as opposed to the old 8% rate. Uh, that legislation, and with guidance from the state, uh, we've been notified that, uh, if we set our tax rate a little bit earlier this year than we normally would, that this year, due to the disaster, we would be able to operate under the, the old 8% rollback, uh, for this coming fiscal year, with the idea that we kick into the 3.5% in, in coming year, in the following year, should I say. So, you're going to have a little bit of tax relief from a standpoint of room, uh, to play with on our property taxes if you need to. I, I would be very cautious to, to try to push that to the max. I think while that ceiling has been raised a little bit because of the disaster, I think it's important that we still maintain a conservative approach and try to keep our operating expenses down as much as possible from an operations maintenance cost standpoint. Uh, but that's what I've gotten. I, I just kind of wanted to give you all a little bit of update. If, if you had any questions, any, any thoughts that, that you wanted to offer, I, I definitely want to hear them, please.
All right. Don, comments to Don?
Yeah, Don, this is Cole. I've got two questions for you. Um, you talked about trimming the budget back. How close would that get us to satisfying the need?
You know, I think, I think with the, with the deferral of capital, uh, I think with, uh, you know, looking at, uh, the, the moves we've talked about from a standpoint of, uh, non-essential expenses cutting back, no hiring, um, I, I think it gets us a large part. It'll get you, realistically, I think we can probably get, you know, two-thirds of the way, if not three-quarters of the way, um, down the road with, with just those particular moves, uh, and, and then potentially look at further cuts in, in, in expenses, um, you know, looking at overtime budgets, look at those type of things, uh, to try to minimize hitting fund balance as much as possi- My goal is to try to minimize hitting the fund balance as much as possible. Do we have a, a, a pretty healthy fund balance? Absolutely. Keep in mind, out of that million bucks you've got in there, uh, you need to keep at least 40% of that, uh, you know, it's just the base for, for our policies. Uh, so you've got about 60% of that, 50% of that to play with if you want to. Um, but I, I mean, I think we need to analyze that as we get further into this situation, but at this stage of the game, those are the brakes we put on.
Okay. One, one final question for you, Don. Is there any kind of state aid that we can apply, apply for a state program to carry the load, or are we on our own?
No, that, that, there is. And, and, and at this stage of the game, they're formulating those programs, and, and the belief we're getting, the read we're getting from the state is the fact that there should be some pretty significant money, uh, that will become available to cities, uh, uh, in particular cities our size, uh, in, in the coming weeks, coming months to try to help address these concerns. Uh, will that be grant money? Will that be loan money? Um, you know, those, those are issues that are going to be looked at. I think the other thing that, that you should be aware of, and that is the fact that from a federal level, you, you may remember a few years ago, the, the stimulus package, the infamous phrase shovel ready, that became a household phrase, uh, and, and I think that it's very likely that you're going to see, uh, a significant infrastructure improvement package get released at a federal level that will trickle down to, to local governments and, and to state governments, uh, you know, to manage and, and to try to promote, uh, infrastructure improvement projects that will hopefully promote unemployment, uh, to try to deal with the large volume of folks who are unemployed at this stage of the game. I would caution you in saying, oh, great, that means there's going to be a windfall coming from the federal government, and we're going to be able to spend a lot of that money in Solado. If you recall, the stimulus package, the way it worked last time, uh, there really was not a lot of money that ended up going into the local communities. Uh, the, the state got a lot of that money for, for highway improvement projects and things like that. The larger cities ended up capitalizing, uh, it became a real, uh, scrape and a, and a real, uh, qualification battle for the smaller communities to, to, to go up against those folks for those dollars. But that said, it's a different world, it's a different day, it may be a different stimulus package. We can only think about what we went through before, uh, when we start looking at those types of improvements.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Other questions or comments, please? Other questions or comments, please? Well, Don, as, as we do every day, talk a little bit about some of this. Um, our maintenance man, the only one we had, went to another job. We, have we, or have we even started, uh, trying to hire somebody for that?
No, sir. If you recall, the last meeting, we voted to outsource that until the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so that's why-
Out of savings to the city.
Okay. Would that be one thing that we could live without if we didn't outsource it? And I know you've already started that process.
Oh, I, you're going to need, you're going to need to have that position filled either via outsourcing or via body. It, it's, there's, there's too much mowing and, and too much street work to be done, uh, and sign work to be done, and crash collection to be done to go without that body.
Okay. Now, some of the questions, I, Don, I already know the answer, but I want to make sure that we make this clear to the people that are listening to us out there. We give money to the fire department every year. What about that?
You give money to the fire department, but that also helps the fire department be the fire department.
Of course.
They are a volunteer fire department that receives, uh, limited, limited government funding. They, they have a, a healthy, uh, donation budget that they rely on, uh, that they rely on our, our allocation pretty significantly.
Yes, and, and they cover a lot of territory.
They do.
And they do a lot of good. You're exactly correct. So I'm glad we're going to hold on to that one. Um, let me ask you, tourism side of this thing, they have a committee that works pretty hard, and could that tourism committee pretty much carry on the way it is, even though Chadley is gone?
Oh, I think the tourism committee needs to continue to exist, and they need to continue to meet, and, and, and we will present them with the results of the marketing efforts that are under contract at this stage of the game, yes.
Okay, that's good. You, you and I, yesterday, uh, we heard Brad Buckley speak, uh, in his town hall, and then an hour later, we heard John Porter, or at least one of his representatives, and people calling in from that. What did you get from that, from both of those? What did you get from listening from the state side and from the federal side?
I, I got what, I got really what we expected to get from that, and that is the fact that, um, the fact that there are programs that are being developed and implemented that are designed to help the people in a rapid fashion. Uh, you know, I, I think the, the challenge that I, I, I think that people have to be realistic about, though, is this, and that is, this is a nationwide disaster. It is not 200 businesses in Solado that are facing the impact of a flood, a tornado, uh, anything along those lines. We have not seen the magnitude of the economic impact yet, and when all of these businesses start calling in and start, start pulling on the first strings, uh, the process is going to start to slow down a little bit, and I think it's going to get frustrating. The unemployment piece, you saw the unemployment numbers today, uh, they're significant, and, and they're records, and, and they're not going to get any better for the next 30 days, and, and, you know, maybe longer, depending on how long this thing drags out. So, the, the impression I got from those discussions are the state and the federal government are really trying to help at this stage of the game, but, uh, you know, we just need to work with them and, and, and respond.
Yes, and that was pretty much the message from both of them. So what about our police force?
What about our police force?
What about it? We talk about reducing numbers. What are you thinking about?
We're not at that point at this stage of the game.
Very well. Because as we go through this thing, crime is going to increase, and when crime increases, that puts this whole community in jeopardy. And we're already seeing some of that happening right now, so I'm glad to hear you say that, and I certainly concur with that. Our police force and our volunteer people, as far as anyone who is doing anything, and the fire department, which does a marvelous job for us. We cannot fool with that. We really need to make sure that's okay. Let me ask you about, you know, we hear sometimes-
Mayor, let me, let me jump in real quickly. Frank, can you hear? Frank, can you hear? Can everybody else hear?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay.
Can't hear.
No, Frank, we can't hear you. Yeah, the audio, you're not connecting for some reason. We got your video but no audio. Okay, go ahead, Mayor.
All right. You know, we, we talk about our credit report. We even heard a little bit of it with Don, and a few other Dons, when we talked about the bond. Um, how important is it to keep that very, very good, our credit?
Oh, I, I mean, I think it is important. I mean, we have not gone out and, and been rated by a, a rating agency at this stage of the game, and, and we, we don't have enough debt at this stage of the game to, to justify that need, but I think it's important, whether you're rated or not, to always be sensitive, to make sure that you're-
Yes.
You, you've got fund balance, to make sure that you're sound in your fiscal decisions, and to make sure that you're maintaining, uh, a positive direction for your community.
I agree totally, and it is not a time to panic. We have to take this a day at a time and use our common sense and go forward. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
And also, this is a time when we don't draw back. You said, but you've been talking about money all this time and everything. Yes, we have, but the world keeps going, Texas keeps going, Houston, Dallas keeps going, Solado's got to keep going, and we've got to remain positive, not panicked, and do what common sense and what we know. We've always done that, and that is something that we've got to continue doing. I think, along with what Brad Buckley said and John Porter, that it's going to be hard. Well, so was construction. Pretty difficult. We lost businesses there, sales tax went down. So was the time when there was a move to disanex us, and we went through that, and we came back together. So the time now is to take this a day at a time, a week at a time, a month at a time, a year at a time, and to spend money in Solado wherever you can. a year at a time, and to spend money in Salado wherever you can. That will help our sales tax. And that will be a part, that you can be a part of this great village. I see a lot of positive things, and I know I'm not going to talk about the money side of this. But you see the positiveness of this town. People walking, people running, people checking on their neighbors, and doing all the things that we're supposed to do. None of us are extremely rich. Most of us are not even rich. Most of us just try to get along for month by month. But I will tell you, have never seen an outpouring of love like your village. It has nothing to do with leadership. It has to do with the heart of the people. Now, you know my background, and you can say, okay, preacher, end of the preaching. Yeah, maybe. It's not the end. It's the beginning. And when it's all over with, like any time, it will get stronger, and we will learn from Well, Don, you ready to go on to the next one?
Yes, sir.
Discuss and consider possible action appointing Secretary Kara McPartlin as the early voting clerk for the Village of Salado general election on May the 2nd, 2020.
Yes, sir, Mayor. As you know, we're having the election. We're responsible for the election this year since the school district has moved in November. We're planning for a May election, and we need to designate our own early voting clerk because the county cannot use the school district's early voting clerk. So the protocol is to go to the secretary, so our staff recommendation is that Kara be designated as the early voting clerk for the upcoming election.
Questions to Don, please.
Hey, Don, this is Cole.
Sorry?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Don, how does that, how does the directive that we got this afternoon play into the whole voting process? It's the way I read it, we don't really have a choice in whether we have the election in May or November. It's pretty much directed that it's in November now. Is that correct?
The governor has not directed the election to go to November at this point. The Secretary of State has sent out the advisory, which was the strongest advisory I've ever seen, indicating with bold and underlined letters, you need to move the election and you need to move it quickly. At the end of the day, Mike, it still falls back to the same discussion we had a few days back, and that is the fact that only the board can move that election. The governor has chosen to make that a local decision, and, but clearly the advice from the Secretary of State is not mentioning words and it says move it because you're putting people at risk and because you're putting your election at risk of being contested. So what that means from, from the village's perspective is this, and that is, y'all are scheduled, I believe, I think y'all set the 16th of April as the date to consider moving the election. If you'd like to meet before then to do that, based on what we got this afternoon late, we certainly can do that. It won't take long to do that, I wouldn't think, from a decision standpoint. And what it would do is it would shut down what we've done up to this point, and we would just get ready for a November election. Or if for some reason you get some type of read from the governor's office that July is acceptable to him, then you could go, go that direction. But we're not getting that read from the Secretary of State's office. They're still pushing to November, based on the governor's original guidance. So I agree with you. I think the direction you got today was pretty black and white.
Yeah, I would be open to having another meeting.
Would everybody else be open to having another quick meeting? Maybe we could even do it tomorrow or do it Monday?
Yeah, this is Cole. I agree.
Other people, please?
Doesn't matter to me what day we, we hold the, the meeting to re-vote on this, but I like to make it as accessible to the public as possible. So at this point, what is the negative of just keeping the vote where it is on the 16th? And not taking action on the other two items?
Amber, it's clearly, clear to y'all's decision. The advice from the Secretary of State today was you need to act quickly and as quickly as possible. And we thought it was sent to you, it was, it was, it was pretty direct, but is there a negative? I don't know. That's for y'all to discuss. I mean, I, you know, you now know that you're going to be under an emergency order, you know, at the end of the month.
Right.
So that will be official tomorrow, but, and I think there's a very high likelihood, if truly we're looking at going into May, there's a high likelihood that you're going to be in it in May, too, at least the beginning of May.
Right. No, I mean, I completely agree, and I mean, I'm looking at it right now, just so people are understanding what we're talking about. The statement is in the email, you must take action to do so immediately. That's directive. It's not you should or you should think about it. It says you, you will. It says you must. I understand it's not from the governor. I also understand that recently, our local government and one of our local orders did have some provisions in there for voters, but if, of course, state supersedes county, and so if the state's going to overrule that, then it doesn't matter what Judge Blackburn's order was. And so as far as I understand it. So I mean, I'm okay with, with the meeting and going forward with, with the vote now that we have this information. I was just wanting to put it out a little bit further so that the public could still ask questions. Maybe there's a way that we could get this information to Tim to get it in the paper. Something so that people understand what we're voting on, because I don't want people to think that we're doing this for any reason other than public safety and what this newest guidance is that we just received today.
So why don't we, why don't we look at doing, why don't we get, I'll send it over to Tim at the paper. We'll, we'll publish that. We'll actually publish the email online on our website and-
Okay, be great.
That's the case, to give people a little bit of notice of what I'm hearing you say, is maybe we look at doing a Monday meeting at six o'clock and we, we knock it out very quickly.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Six o'clock, I think, is more accessible than the middle of the day.
I agree.
Other questions?
I think, I think, Don, the big point you brought up was to avoid a contested election. I think that's a key point.
Say that again, John?
He did.
Yeah, Don mentioned the possibility of a contested election if we don't delay it. I think that's a key point.
Well, I think the key point is actually the, the health and safety of our voters and our election judges.
Would you look at this? One way or the other, it really didn't make, it really didn't. If we move it to November, we move it to November.
November.
If we keep it in May, we keep it in May. All we're saying for right now is if things are as they are, May 2nd, we don't have to go through this. If it's November, then we've got five or six months to go through it again. I really do not see the need of another meeting just to do this.
Mayor, it's not on the agenda to vote tonight, and I have to-
I know that, I know that. But I want to make it clear, as far as I'm concerned, less meetings, going forward with something that is of common sense is most important. There is no action?
I understand. What are we saying?
The only item on your agenda for action tonight is naming Kara as early voting clerk. And until you delay, until you delay the election, which it sounds like we're headed in that direction, until you delay the election, we need to appoint her as early voting clerk so we can continue the process.
That's exactly the point.
I move to appoint Mayor Kara as election clerk.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion, please.
Questions?
So can't we just, wait, can't we just get rid of both of the next two items and then request that staff schedule another meeting? I mean, do we have to vote on this?
To answer that question, I think Amber would probably be yes, because we have about 25 applications for mailing ballots that we're obligated to process. And we need to have an election court designated to do that. And if they, you know, we'll still send ballots out to them until such time as you cancel the election and move the election, and then they'll have the ability to vote, and of course their votes come in and they can count in the November election, they don't get discarded. So it's, it's just a procedural issue more than anything else.
Okay. I was just tempted to tell you we were doing it if-
I understand, I understand what you're saying. You're in a transition deal.
Correct.
Other questions or discussion? Do I hear the call for the question?
Questions?
Question has been called. We'll go by, we'll go by, once again, aye or nay? We'll begin with Frank, since you're up in the front corner, at least by this computer. Frank?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Passes. Okay, the next one is, discuss and consider possible action to enter into an agreement with Bell County for the use of the county's voting equipment for the upcoming Village of Salado general election on May 2nd, 2020. Don?
Mayor, again, this is a situation that we, you know, we recommend approval of the agreement. It can be canceled should you choose to move the election, but again, trying to move the No cost to us until the equipment's used. And if we go to a November election, there's no cost to us for the equipment. The county covers that.
Okay, discussion, questions to Don? Discussion and questions to Don? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Discussion, please.
Question?
Question has been called. Once again, Frank? Can you hear him?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes.
Amber?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, particularly to the alderman and older lady for being a part of this. It's a, it's a new experience for us.
It went at least the first ten minutes of the new-
Sure was.
We got, just so you know, we had, I think we had over 20, 25 at one point that had logged on. We apologize for the connection issues upfront, and I think the earlier folks get connected, the easier it's going to be next time around, and it'll smooth out as we get used to the new normal, I guess. Hopefully, this won't be too long, though, that we have to keep doing this.
Very well. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion has been made and seconded. Thank you very much, audience, for being a part of this and for listening to democracy in a different form. Vallow, thank you. Bye.